Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. My name's Lucy Prashker and I live in Alford. And I am the Chair of the Regional School District Planning Board. And in less than a week, next Monday for most of us, those of us in seven of the eight towns, and this Saturday for residents in Egremont, we're going to be making a big decision. And that's whether to combine the Berkshire Hills Regional School District and the Southern Berkshire Regional School District into a new, single, pre-K through 12 regional district. There are a lot of details and nuances to the decision, but boiled down to its essence, the question really is, can our districts do better together, which we are now doing apart? Our eight-town board thinks the answer to that question is yes. But before I get into why, I just want to talk a little bit about how we got here. In the spring of 2019, the Berkshire Hills School Committee sent a letter to the Southern Berkshire School Committee to ask if they wanted to discuss the possibility of merging. The eight select boards were copied on that letter. And in response to that letter, the eight select boards met to decide whether they wanted to study the possibility. The answer was yes, and our eight-town board was formed. And over the last three and a half years, our 24 volunteers have been working on that study. Three members from each of the eight towns, so 24 folks on our board, and we've got at least one school committee member from each of the eight towns. Our superintendents thankfully have been part of the work from the very beginning. We've held over 180 public meetings since we formed, and collectively, we've invested thousands of hours into this work. Before we started looking at possible solutions, we wanted to be sure that we understood the challenges that we currently face. So we engaged a research team, a team different from Jake's team, the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, MARS, to help us figure out where the two districts are right now, to look at baselines. And these were the challenges that we saw. Staggering declines in enrollment over the last decade, but even though school population is dropping, our operating costs are rising. We've had flat state revenue, so taxpayers are shouldering increasing tax burdens even as our enrollment declines. And all of this combines to limit our two districts' ability to offer a broad range of programs and support to our students. So I just want to pause a minute on enrollment declines because these are really foundational to the work we've been doing. Here are the numbers. There's been actually over 37% increase in K through 12 enrollment since the year 2000, and those declines are projected to continue. Now, you can argue about what the rate of decline is going to be going into the future, but all those expert in doing these kinds of demographic projections agree that declines are going to continue. The most recent projection we have from Berkshire Regional Planning Commission is that there's going to be an additional 24% decline by 2030, so a total decline of 52% over that 30-year period, which is pretty chilling. Yeah, so this is a graph that shows those declines for each of our two districts. The top line is combined decline across the two districts since the year 1995. The next one is Berkshire Hills, and the one on the bottom is Southern Berkshire. So you can see pretty steady decline and steep decline over those years. So looking at that data, our finance subcommittee concluded that our current models of operation are not sustainable. What does that mean? That means either taxpayers will need to agree to pay more at higher rates of increase for fewer and fewer kids, or programs and people will eventually need to be cut. So that led us to engage Jake's research team to present us with other options. And we looked at many different models that ran a spectrum, from more formalized and specific collaboration on one end, to full combination of grades pre-K through 12 on the other. And the model that our board selected was the model that Jake's research team recommended, and this is it. Create a new pre-K through 12 regional district that maintains all existing elementary and middle schools as they are, but creates a single high school in a new state-of-the-art facility that would be built on the Great Barrington campus. The new facility would have greatly expanded vocational, also known as Chapter 74, facilities and programs, up to six of those, which would be available to high school students in all eight towns. That would double the number of Chapter 74 programs currently available. Currently, Monument Mountain just this year added a third Chapter 74 program, so they have three now. Automotive, horticulture slash agriculture, and early childcare. And Mount Everett has no Chapter 74 program. So if we could get six, we'd be doubling our vocational education capacity in South Berkshire. We're very underserved here as compared to other parts of the county and across the So why did we choose this model? What's the value proposition here? So first, with a single district, we would be able to realize economies of scale and efficiencies with cost savings on the operating side projected at $1.2 to $1.8 million a year. That's $1.2 to $1.8 million a year. And that's factoring in increasing Southern Berkshire teachers' salaries to bring them into parity with Berkshire Hills teachers, which they aren't now. So that's number one, money. Number two, good for students. More choices, academic and extracurricular, more support, guidance, special ed, social emotional, English language learners, plus vocational and technical opportunities that don't exist currently in either district on the scale that I just described. And then finally, if we join together, we will have a critical mass and pooled resources that will better position us to provide our kids with the education they need and deserve in a way our towns can afford. So I'm going to pass it now to Deb Phillips, one of our planning board members from the town of Great Barrington, and also the Chair of our Educational Quality Subcommittee.
Thanks. So we do lead with education, and yet it was never our charge to determine the educational direction of the school district. This will continue to be the role of the administration and staff of the school in concert with the school committee. That said, we did a great deal of research on the question of educational quality and did develop the following guiding principles. One, to ensure that all students in the eight towns have equitable access to the broadest range of high-quality academic programming, enrichment activities, and targeted services. Two, with the aim of supporting student growth and development to ensure that faculty and staff have the necessary resources, a robust network of peers, and access to high-quality professional learning and growth experiences that reflect contemporary, research-validated teaching and learning practices. And three, through combined efficiencies and scale, to advance new programming that will expand educational opportunities and improve outcomes for students. These have served as our North Star as we looked at what we could gain through working as a single new eight-town district. At the elementary and middle school levels, where schools will stay as-is, we anticipate increased opportunities for faculty and staff to share best practices and to continue to provide the range of opportunities presently available. Next slide. At the high school, the increased numbers of students will allow for the ability to offer all courses offered at either school to all students, the ability to maintain large enough class size for diversity of experience, the freeing up of teaching periods for additional electives or second sections resulting in a curriculum better able to respond to student needs, more advanced placement and advanced courses, and there may be sufficient numbers of students to be able to provide new offerings, and an increased Chapter 74 career vocational technical education offerings and post-high school tracks, which I'll outline in the next slide. In our financial projections, no offerings are eliminated from either school, and the offerings actually are expanded. The high school design and its educational program is the focus of educational planning over the next six to 12 months. Programs, courses, school organization, pathways, all of this will lead to a building design, which will in turn lead to the engineering and the final project cost. High school visioning work was started under the Regional School District Planning Board, and we have a commitment from the Bar Foundation to fund additional next steps educational and programming design work for the new high school over the coming six to 12 months. In a new eight-town school district, this work will be done by representatives from all eight towns. We also see this new school district as an opportunity to offer more extracurricular activities, including all those presently offered at both schools, including a greater variety of sports, clubs, theater, and music options, more support for students with different needs, a more diverse guidance staff, and more mental health and wellness offerings. Lastly, a larger, more diverse student body will create a culture of broader inclusion and allow more people power for marginalized groups of students. Next slide. So while a high school built for the Berkshire Hills Regional School District, three-town district, would likely include up to four vocational Chapter 74 offerings, the increased population will allow for us to hopefully get up to six programs. The recommendations from the Ed Quality Subcommittee, which were approved by the full board, include what is shown on the slide here. A committee comprised of community members in the trades and industries as well as youth development developed these preliminary recommendations for the CBT and other offerings that we have outlined. Innovative pathways, electives, and internships are all additional ways to support students as they consider college and career pathways beyond high school and in our community. The building committee will work with the state to determine which programs will actually be included and in what form as we move forward. And I'm going to pass it to Jake.
Hey, everyone. I'm Jake, everyone. I'm the project manager, and my charge is to give you a very brief overview of the finance. And I'm not going to go too far into the weeds. I wanted to give people sort of a 30,000-foot view. Finance is, if we lead with education, obviously, we follow with finance, which is obviously a very important element of this project. Finance is broken into two buckets. Operating expenses, which are the things which districts need to run day-to-day operations, everything from paying staff to buying materials and supplies. And within that, we also have to consider transportation costs and non-debt capital, which are investments in buildings, maintenance for buildings, which wouldn't require borrowing. So that's one bucket, operating expenses. The second bucket is capital expenses. Those are things that involve significant investments in buildings, including building new buildings or doing major renovations. And so that's the second bucket that we think about. Within the capital expenses, the subcommittee and the committee had to consider a couple of questions, including what should we do with debt which exists currently? So each of the districts has borrowed money in the past, and how would we manage that if we were to merge? The second question was, if we were to build and or renovate a high school together, how would that be apportioned out to the eight towns? And then thirdly, how would we deal with future debt, recognizing that down the road, our buildings will need roofs and boilers and things of that sort? And how will we pay for that? So those are all basic questions that we had a finance committee, which was led by Nadine Haver out of Sheffield, and they were a very reactive committee working on these questions of finance. So this is just kind of a snapshot of the combined result of bringing the two districts together. We worked with the Abrahams Group in modeling hundreds of scenarios. We sliced data. We continue to slice data as we get requests to look at things in particular ways. But the bottom line was, when we bring the two districts together and create efficiencies and we apply savings, the merger situation does save money across the eight towns collectively. The gray bar is what the districts would pay collectively if they remained independent, and the blue bar is what they would pay, you know, based on our projections, if they were to merge. So clearly, the blue bar is lower than the gray bar. But one of the challenges we had was, how do you combine fiscal models and assessments when you have different methodologies in the two districts currently in their agreements? And that was a challenge that the subcommittee had to really grapple with. And we went through a lot of creative problem solving in trying to manage that challenge. But what we decided was, it was really important that there weren't big losers and winners in this thing. We wanted really to spread the impact of both savings and costs across the eight towns as fairly inequitably as we could. So that was one of the things that was really built into the model. The second thing was a building and smoothing mechanism so that individual towns wouldn't experience large spikes in a particular year, which can happen in some of the agreements. So that was another consideration in building the models. And when we actually brought the two districts together, one of the things we actually found was that there was a big spike when we combined the two fiscal systems. And so we had to come up with a creative solution to deal with that. So this is just the same sort of bar graph in fiscal year '26, which would be theoretically the first year of the merger. And this graph is meant to do two things. One is to illustrate that in the merger scenario, if you look at the block of three towns versus the block of five towns, that the merger spending is lower than the non-merger spending, so there's savings to be had. But what's also important to remind people, because there's been a lot of debate over how to pay for the high school, is that capital expenses actually are a very small amount of the total spending that towns invest in schools in a given fiscal year. The orange represents the capital investment. And so you can see in the Southern Berkshire towns, there's a very small amount, when you look at the total apportionment out of the five towns, that actually is attributable to capital expenses. The orange bar on the Berkshire Hills side actually is a little taller, and that's because if we were to build this new high school together, the way the apportionment is set up is that Berkshire Hills towns would actually bear a bigger portion of the cost. But this is just intended to illustrate, again, those two phenomenon. So I'm not going to go, again, too much into the details and operating, but I just want to give you a general idea of how it works. There's three pieces. The first piece is what we call Part A. And Part A is actually what's required by the state. So the state, on an annual basis, determines what each town in the entire state, in the Commonwealth, has to contribute towards its public schools. That's called required local contribution, required minimum contribution. Same thing. That's calculated by the Department of Education. It's based mostly on foundation enrollment, which is the number of kids who live in your town, who are of school age, whether they go to your school or not. So even kids who go to private and parochial schools or homeschool, they're still counted in your foundation enrollment. It's the total number of kids who live in your town. And they also look at what age they are, because they have proportional costs associated with high school kids versus elementary school kids, particular needs, special education, English language learners. It's all apportioned out according to a formula at the state level. In addition to that, the required local contribution can be influenced by a town's wealth, and that would include the total property value, which is equalized property value, EQV, and/or your resident income. However, when we did an analysis of the eight towns, the way the department does it, it's an either-or. They either use foundation enrollment, or they use the wealth factors, and they choose the lower of the two. That's what ultimately gets assessed out to the towns. And we found in all cases, foundation enrollment is really what's driving ultimately the required local contribution. So required local contribution is part of our methodology, and it just so happens to be part of both districts' methodology currently because it's required. So Part A doesn't change at all. However, districts spend more than they're required to. Towns contribute more than they're required to. And so we have this amount above required spending, which we then have to deal with. We have to apportion out to the towns in a particular way. We ended up actually using the required local contribution, which is set by the state, but we used a five-year rolling average. So you would do a look back of five years, and you would determine what was the required local contribution of each town as a proportion of the total required contribution of all the towns combined. And so we set those percentages. And the reason we used five years is because, again, we wanted a smoothing mechanism. We didn't want a one-year spike or decline in enrollment to really shift the assessments out dramatically in a single year. So by looking at a five-year average, that's our first smoothing mechanism that we have built into the formula. This is actually what Southern Berkshire does currently. So we actually borrowed from their methodology and applying to this one. We then added a really creative solution in, because when we did Part A and B, and we put the eight towns together, we did still find some spikes, and you'll see this on the next slide. And we wanted to make sure that towns didn't have that spike. And so we said, well, how would we control that? Could we build some sort of safety valve or a cap-in so that no town, their assessments would not increase beyond a particular level? And so we built this 2% safety valve cap-in, and we modeled a couple of different percentages to determine which one made the most sense, and we settled on 2%. And so what we're doing is basically, in effect, saying that no town's assessment can increase 2% higher than the total assessment increase for all the towns combined. So let's say that the budget went up 2%, and the assessment out to the towns was 2%. We would add another 2% on that and say, no town can go over 4%. And so that is what we refer to as a safety valve cap, and you'll see that in action in a very simple slide that we've outlined for you. So when we put the eight towns together, before the SV, the safety valve, this is what happened. We saw dramatic increases in the assessments to the Southern Berkshire towns. These are by percentages. So you can see the 17.5% in Egremont and Monterey, and, you know, really large increases in Alford and Sheffield and Marlborough, too, while we saw the Great Barrington, Stockbridge, and West Stockbridge assessments go down. The reason for that is driven by, in effect, spending patterns between the two districts. Great Barrington spends a bit more, so when you bring the two districts together, you move towards the mean, right, the middle, in terms of spending, because you're combining populations. And then the second impact was methodology. Berkshire Hills uses a different methodology than Southern Berkshire. They use a resident methodology. So when we shifted to the five-year rolling, it changed the apportionment out to the eight towns, and it hit the Southern Berkshire towns pretty dramatically. So we knew if we did this, that we probably wouldn't even be voting this weekend, right, and on Monday, because there's no way this would be politically palatable. So the safety valve addresses this because it sets a cap. So the cap in this case is, we calculated from FY '25 to FY '26, how much did the budget go up, and how much did that increase in assessments? And that was 1.2%. So the total assessment between FY '25 and '26 was 1.2%. We added on the 2% safety valve, and we created, basically, that sums in a total of a 3.2% cap. So the bottom line is, no town can have its assessment go higher than 3.2%. What that means is that we pull money from the towns that were over the cap, and we reassign it to the towns that are under the cap. And so when you apply the cap, this is what happens. And as you can see, the new bars are the assessments at the town level, and every town is now at or below 3.2%, if that makes sense, okay? Hopefully, that makes sense. I know this is a little bit complicated, and we have a lot of backup slides, which I'm not going to include tonight, which show you slide by slide how this occurs. But you might ask here in Berkshire Hills, well, it looks like the Berkshire Hills towns actually absorb some of that difference in their first year, and that's actually, that's correct. But the interesting part about this model is, as you project out further, there will be moments where towns in Berkshire Hills may actually go above the cap, and they actually have to be relieved. So it really is an insurance policy that assures that no town gets hit extra hard in a single year. When we modeled it, we did find that, we think, over time, probably seven or eight years out, the safety valve will not really have an impact anymore, because there'll be a balancing as this marriage, I guess, matures. And you won't see the kind of variations that we are seeing in this initial first year of wedlock in effect. So if you're interested in finding more out about your town, I would really encourage you to go to our website. On our website, there's a big button that says "Finance" on it, and if you click on it, we have the eight towns listed. You actually can see a snapshot of what the impact is to your particular town. And so I think that if you are curious about what the impact is to your town, both on the operating level and the capital level, I encourage you to go there. So the other big question that we get asked a lot, and I'm not going to go through all the capital assessment, is, you know, how about this new high school? Who's paying for it, and how's it getting paid for? And we did a lot of evaluation on how best to tackle that question. We ended up assigning, in effect, a 90-10 model, in which 90% of the costs go to the Berkshire Hills towns. But what's interesting about this is that actually turns out to be an advantage for the Berkshire Hills towns and an advantage for the Southern Berkshire towns. Because when this high school is built, you know, we are estimating the high school at $100 million, and that's a number that folks have questioned and challenged, and we'd encourage folks to go to the website and see how we derive that. We looked at MSBA historical data. We looked at the work that Berkshire Hills had done in the last round of project investigation. We look at square footage price. We tried to slice it a few different ways in deriving this $100 million cost. But we signed 90% to the Berkshire Hills town, assuming that if they build it alone, it's probably still going to be a $90 million project. So it doesn't increase proportionally to the number of students you're going to take in, because you've already done a lot of the work, site work, infrastructure, things like that. So anyways, 90% is assessed to Berkshire Hills, which ends up being $90 million. $90 million gets assessed to them. But then what happens is, we reduce their assessment by contributions from the Mass School Building Authority, and we have a contribution from the Southern Berkshire Schools. What's interesting about this particular build-it-together model, which I want to make sure I say, and I'm stammering a little bit here, is that there are a number of incentives that the Mass School Building Authority provides when projects are conducted. Everything from having an energy-efficient school to what we believe is going to be an advantage here, which is a regionalization incentive. So they will provide up to 6% on the total cost of the project in efforts where communities are coming together to regionalize around the construction of a building. That 6% gets assigned to the total $100 million, which ends up actually being an advantage for the Berkshire Hills towns. So if Berkshire Hills builds it alone, that's the bottom line in this slide, and they get just the base aid, which is, we're calculating about 48.5%. So they would be picking up somewhere around 51, 52% of the cost. On a $90 million project, the debt they'll be carrying is $46 million, which equates about $2.7 million a year. Whereas, if they build it with Southern Berkshire, they get the additional 6% assigned across the $100 million, plus the contribution from Southern Berkshire towns, and the total cost will be about $41.5 million. towns, and the total cost will be about $41.5 million with annual debt service at 2.5. So the bottom line is there's an advantage in building this high school together. On the Southern Berkshire side, we do have a slide, obviously, we customized this slideshow today for the Berkshire Hills population, but the advantage on their side is that it's actually a very limited contribution from their towns and the risk that they have is that if Berkshire Hills builds a high school alone and they send students in at market rate on vocational tuition, it could actually cost them more paying tuition at the town level than it will cost them in contributing to the debt on the new high school. So I'm going to stop there. I know it's a lot to take in on assessment, on finance, but hopefully that gives you at least a broad overview of how we tackled the two big issues of operating and capital expenses.
So I have the job of waking everyone up by talking about the regional agreement. Why do I have feedback? They don't even want me to talk about the regional agreement. Here we go. Okay, so our board worked on it for a solid 10 months. It was a very methodical process. We took up most of the substantive provisions one by one. Some were tougher than others. School committee composition, I think we spent three full board meetings, so over six hours talking through that one. But we were successful in working together across all eight towns to find agreement and we succeeded in hammering out an agreement that representatives from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have blessed. I'm just trying to get rid of that feedback. And they are the experts on regional agreements and the agreement has been carefully reviewed by them and they have told us that, assuming the towns approve the merger, they will recommend our agreement to the Commissioner of Education for approval. Just a couple of words about the school committee composition because that's obviously of great interest to most voters. As everyone knows, our eight towns vary widely in population. My town is the smallest with 486 residents based on 2020 census, that's Alford, and Great Barrington is more than 10 times that size. So we've got great variation in population across the eight towns. We looked at a variety of approaches to addressing this because it's something of a challenging situation. But in the end, our board felt strongly that if we are going to join together to form a new region of eight, we should have a governance structure that reflects sort of our united region view rather than a structure that is weighted according to relative town population size. So where we landed, do we have a slide with that? Where we landed is a school committee of 11 with members elected district-wide as they are now across the eight towns. Voters in the Berkshire Hills towns may ask, why? Why do Southern Berkshire's town residents? So six of the 11 will be from Southern Berkshire. And so the way it works is everyone has one, everyone has one seat, every town has a school committee rep resident in their town. So that's eight right there. And then we've got three more to distribute. So we gave one more to Sheffield and two more to Great Barrington to reflect their much greater size. So again, all members are elected district-wide as they are today and we felt that at the end of the day, based upon the way school committees operate now, all school committee members are going to be making decisions based on what's best for the kids of all eight towns, not what's best for the kids in their particular town or for the taxpayers of their individual town, that we're going to be operating as a regional district, as a united eight-town regional agreement. And this region-wide perspective and philosophy sort of quickly took hold on our board and was central to how we made many of the decisions that we did, not just on school committee governance, but operating methodology as Jake just described. How's this feedback out there? Is it really annoying because we can do without the mic if need be? It's okay? Okay. So I want to talk a little bit about what we call the unwind contingency or the debt approval contingency that's in the regional agreement. So the real value proposition to this merger, both for our kids and for our taxpayers, is the creation of this new single high school with greatly expanded academic extracurricular programming, also greatly expanded vocational educational programming and facilities. That's where we're really getting big educational benefits and that's where we're getting the possibility for significant savings by joining those high schools together and being able to realize significant economies of scale. We won't know for sure whether voters will approve the cost of building that new high school until the new high school is designed and priced and we vote on a bond, on the debt issuance. That's not going to happen for another year or so, so we're sort of in this chicken and the egg situation, right? Because no one's going to spend the money and invest the effort to design an eight-town high school if the voters don't want it. So we need to know whether the voters want this merger before we invest in that process. But if the debt approval is not passed, right? If in a year, the vote is no on the debt for the new high school, the new eight-town high school, we've sort of lost our value proposition. So we needed a way to step back if that were to happen. And what we came up with was this unwind provision or debt approval contingency. And the way that works is we form the new district now. As soon as we vote, all eight towns, majority of the eight towns, if they vote yes, transition school committee members are appointed and our new district comes into existence. Our existing districts continue in existence. They don't go away. They keep going, they keep educating our kids. The new district works on the design of the new eight-town high school and does other things sort of in preparation for that vote. If the vote is yes, the debt approval contingency is satisfied and we keep going and the new district becomes operational probably July 1, 2026. So the two existing districts continue to operate up until that point. The new district is in this transitional phase where they're getting ready to take over the operation of the combined district in 2026. And we keep going until that date, at which point the existing districts go away and the new district is there responsible for educating our kids. That's the operational date, July 1, 2026. If the vote is no, if the eight towns don't approve the debt issuance for the new high school by a certain date, then we unwind. The new district goes away, the new district dissolves and the existing districts continue on, which allows Berkshire Hills to move forward with its high school for three of the towns. And this was really critical in our thinking. We didn't want to do anything that would get in the way of Berkshire Hills moving forward with its high school project, either as a three-town project or as an eight-town project. So if the vote is no for the eight-town high school, Berkshire Hills can move forward without delay in getting approval and constructing a three-town high school. So that's the reason for the unwind provision, also known as the debt approval contingency. The other thing I wanted to talk about briefly, which is addressed in the regional agreement, is this concept of intra-district choice. So when we come together, students will be going to the school in closest proximity to where they live. That makes sense, right? When we're talking about very young children, elementary school children and middle school children. But there are some very important exceptions to that built into the regional agreement. First, parents may elect to go to this, have their kids go to the school that is closest to them, or they may elect to keep their kids in the schools they are currently attending through elementary school and through middle school. So that they're grandfathered in. Parents are guaranteed that they will have that election. They can either, for example, in Alford, the elementary and middle school at Berkshire Hills is a lot closer to our homes than are the elementary and middle schools down in Sheffield. So parents in Alford can elect either to send their kids to the school that's closest to their home and have transportation provided, or they can elect to keep their kids at Undermountain or one of the other Southern Berkshire schools during that grandfather period. Even after the grandfather period ends, parents will have intra-district choice. So they will, even after that grandfather period ends, have the ability to choice in intra-district to a school that is not in closest proximity to their home if that's what they want. Whether transportation will be provided for those kids outside that grandfather period will depend on how much it will cost to bus them to a school that is not in closest proximity. But they will have the choice to go to that school that is not in closest proximity even after the grandfathering period ends. So there's been a lot of confusion on that issue. There have been things said that are not correct about that issue and I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you. Go ahead, Peter. I'm Peter Taylor. I'm a resident of Great Barrington and I've been the vice chair of this planning board. And as we move to the close of this presentation, I just want to reflect back probably what you all are thinking. And that is that there's a lot of information to absorb in order to be an informed voter. And I think this information and the volume of it really reflects the careful due diligence, the modeling and the analysis and the deliberations we've done as a committee to really bring forth a recommendation that's based on data, based on community input and based on what we think is going to be best for the eight towns going forward as a region. I believe the first slide up here points you though to a resource on our website because recognizing the amount of information we have available to you, we have spent time and resources to create issue briefs, frequently asked questions, resources for you to quickly be able to go back and better understand some of the points that are really important to this decision and recommendation. My charge tonight is much lighter than my colleagues because I have the opportunity to speak on two points before we close and we head to question and answers. The first is transportation. When we started this process, the board really worried that this was going to be our biggest challenge because of the impact on student experience and also parent concerns in terms of travel times for their kids to and from school. It didn't turn out to be the case however, though. We had an operations subcommittee that retained an expert transportation consultant affirmed by the name of Alliance Education Consultants and they used a sophisticated software program to map out possible bus routes between and among the eight towns and the schools. And what they found actually were really pleasing findings for us and for the eight towns as they consider this proposal. And I believe you have the yes/no in front of you and I just wanted to speak to a couple of their findings that are encouraging in terms of transportation. You know, the first is around cost. If we combine the two fleets and the expense that currently goes into providing transportation for the two districts, there'll be no substantial increase to overall cost and that's important, obviously. We heard from parents, especially in Southern Berkshire, about travel times again. And what we found is actually that on average, there'll be no impact on travel time. Some travel times will be longer, but some will be shorter. What's important to note though is in the transportation recommendation is that there's a two-tier process, scheme for transportation. And in the proposal inherent in our approach is that elementary school kids will no longer ride the bus with high school kids. And so that is an added bonus to this process. In terms of transportation for high school students and middle school students, the conclusion is largely the same. On average, travel times will remain the same. Some might be longer, some will be shorter. We did ask the consultant to say, all right, if there was added investment, what could be accomplished? And what came back in the recommendations is that with a modest investment in additional equipment, that would largely be paid by regional transportation aid from state, from the state, we will be able to reduce minimum time on the bus from currently about 60 minutes down to 45 minutes. And so that's an added plus. So if we could switch to school buildings. We've covered a lot of this already in other parts of the presentation, but I think what's important to note in this slide is that the school buildings for elementary and middle school will remain the same in this, if the eight towns merge. And in fact, the provisions in the regional agreement for closing schools is, requires extensive community input as well as a higher threshold of decision-making to close a school. We've heard a lot, and I think it is one of the most important benefits of the merger, is the state-of-the-art high school that would be able to be built on the campus here at Monument and what the economies of scale would provide if the eight towns come together around educational offerings, especially around vocational education, career vocational education that we've already covered. I think there are some questions in terms of why did we land on a new school versus looking at existing buildings? And I think it's important to point out that Mount Everett and Sheffield is not equipped currently to house, obviously, a combined high school and that Berkshire Hills is in the midst of a process with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to be considered for a new high school. Even if we wanted to think about Mount Everett as a potential site, we would have to re-enter a process and as we saw, state aid is critical for us being able to build a new school. So with that, I think I'm going to turn it back over to Lucy and Jake for some concluding comments.
I just wanted to address that last bullet point on sort of why Great Barrington campus versus Mount Everett campus. You've got to look at the map, right? Geography matters and Great Barrington is more central to our eight towns than is Sheffield. 78% of the kids in the new high school are going to be from the three Berkshire Hills towns. 22% will be from the Southern Berkshire towns. So you need to think about that when you're thinking Great Barrington, 78% of the kids, Southern Berkshire, 22% of the kids. Where should the new high school be? So those are important considerations as well.
I don't know if you want to, this is the kind of the closed slide, but we can skip over.
Well, I'd like my prop.
Which prop do you want?
The prop that's in front of the desk.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Yeah. I brought one show and tell. And you've all seen a lot of signs around, right? So you've seen our sign.
I'm going to cover you up here.
This is my prop. Our schools better together. And you've seen the sign of the opposition, right? Vote no. And then this is on the bottom of the sign of the opposition. Our schools, our choice, one size does not fit all. And we would argue that those reasons, our schools, our choice, one size does not fit all, really supports a yes vote, not a no vote. Why do we say that? Okay, our schools matter. Of course they do. And that's why our model maintains existing elementary and middle schools where they are, and proposes a new state-of-the-art high school, which could be the source of enormous community pride for these eight towns with these expanded vocational programs and facilities. One size does not fit all, completely agree. And that's why we think offering high school students more choices, combining everything, the two districts together, so all of our kids have the opportunity to make all of those choices, makes a lot more sense. Supports diversity, supports choices for our kids, supports the ability of our kids to find their people and feel that they belong. This is our choice? Absolutely. This choice is up to you, the voters. And we have a unique opportunity right now to do something that's good both for our kids and for our pocketbooks. So yes, our schools, our choice, and one size does not fit all, vote yes. I want to talk a little bit about the voting, because that's important. So you've probably heard that we asked all towns to have their votes on October 23. All towns agreed, except the town of Egremont, which is going to be voting on October 21. You've also heard that we need all eight towns, a majority in all eight towns, to vote yes in order for the eight-town agreement to be approved. So the question that's been asked of us is, if Egremont votes no on Saturday, do I really need to go to the special town meeting in my respective town on Monday? And the answer is yes. It's very important that you go to your meeting on Monday. Everyone here should have an equal vote, and it is important, not just to us, the planning board, but to the region, to know where the voters of each town stand. If Egremont were the only town to vote no, or if Alford were the only town to vote no, there may be other options. We might go back to that town, that single town that voted no, to ask their voters to reconsider, based on the will of their neighbors. We might find a way to tweak the agreement in some way to satisfy a particular concern. Or we might decide to explore the possibility of a seven-town region. The point is, we can't know whether any of these options are viable without knowing where the voters in each of our eight towns stand. And that's why it's so essential that your voices are heard on this. So whether your vote is a yes or a no, and whatever the vote in Egremont is on Saturday, please go to your special town meeting and vote. So now we're going to take questions. I appreciate the details on possible vocational programming. I'm concerned about the loss of the Mount Everett partnership with Simon's Rock. Great question. Jake, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I think any of us, or I'm happy to. Or you want to speak to it?
I don't mind speaking.
Oh, okay, great.
The pilot program that Mount Everett is doing with Simon's Rock is exceptional. It is one of many college and high school partnerships that are being piloted around the state. This particular pilot actually comes to an end before the new school district is in place, and could be renewed, it could continue forever. But creating a new high school, while it might not have the same agreement with Simon's Rock, does not preclude in any way having some kind of early college, high school-college combination program in the new high school, and that would certainly be one of the intentions and one of those options that we have as we create career vocational training, innovative pathways, and a wide variety of pathways for students to figure out where they want to go when they leave high school. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but...
Any other questions?
And do you want us to mention if there are folks online that they could submit questions to? Have any come through?
Yeah, I'm busy.
Okay. All right. Good question.
Okay, so many assurances have been articulated that the way the agreement has been written provides the kinds of protection that people should feel comfortable with. However, the agreement can be changed by three-quarters of the towns rather than all of the towns. So how will the agreement provide that kind of protection for the long term? Great question. This was a provision that we talked a lot about on our board. So agreements, regional agreements, can be amended by vote of majority of the towns, two-thirds of the towns, three-quarters of the towns, all of the towns. And before it gets to the towns, an amendment could require a majority of the school committee members, two-thirds of the school committee members, three-quarters of the school committee members. Where we landed is where the U.S. Constitution landed, which is, in order to amend the agreement, you need a two-thirds vote on the school committee, and you need three-quarters of the towns to vote yes. We could have gone with a provision that required unanimity, but people felt on our board, and this was actually a near-unanimous vote, people felt that once we decide to marry, right? Once we decide to form an eight-town region and start thinking of ourselves as an eight-town region, one town, like the town of Alford, for example, should not have a veto power when it comes to the will of the other seven. So that's where we landed on that issue. It's still a very difficult thing to amend the agreement. Two-thirds school committee vote, three-quarters member town vote. But very good question. Okay, I don't see any more questions. We're happy to take questions after the meeting. Really appreciate your coming out, and again, really urge you to go to your special town meetings and vote on either Saturday or Monday. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)